Would like to call the meeting now order? We could all rise from the floor. Any reservations?
All right, uh, the, uh, all of Compuers, representatives from Compuers, talk about the, uh, positive action program in the Maryvale School District. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Chris and I am the program coordinator for Compuer at our school-based program. Um, I wanted to start this off by saying we have some really great news. We are now a part of the Erie, uh, Voces One poster. So, uh, for future years, you can get our services directly through them, which will save the district quite a bit of money instead of going directly through us. So, that's great news for next year and the years to follow. Um, but we do have some data from last year that's finally been analyzed and, uh, just wanted to share a little bit with you so you can see the progress that we're making with the students. Uh, first thing that I want to say is that a hundred percent of the ser- the survey respondents would recommend our program to someone else, which I think is great. Um, seventy-nine percent of students have seen improvements in at least one area, which whether that's attendance, academics, or just behavioral issues that come up. So, that's positive. And then ninety-six percent of the students have positive relationships with their mentors, and I think that's one of the most important parts is that our, the mentors that we use are all college-based, so they're very close in age, so the kids feel like they understand them a little bit more and will talk about things that they may not talk about with their guidance counselor or the school social worker or teacher. So, um, overall, we're having some pretty good results with the program in Maryvale. Um, I will now turn it over to Pat to discuss a little bit about this year so far.
Hi, I'm Patrick. Um, I run the Compuer program here in Maryvale, both in high school and middle school with my interns. Um, so far, this year's going out, it's going great, in my opinion. Um, last year, we had thirty-five students, uh, go through the whole year program. Uh, this year, we started with thirty-eight, down to thirty-six now, just two students no longer wanted to continue with the program, and just totally fine. Um, and I set myself a goal to do twenty-five positive action lessons this year at a minimum, because that's what I did last year. Um, and I'm at the halfway point right now with fourteen, so we're looking really good. And I'm gonna try to beat that twenty-five, because the more skill-building and positive information these students get, the better. So, but yeah, that's all I got. Hopefully, it keeps going well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions or anything? Yeah, sorry about that. Any questions?
Now, you've, you've, you've been with us several years now, and, um, you know, I just want to say we appreciate your partnership and what you do for our kids. I think the kids get a lot out of, out of the service of your organization, so thank you.
Of course. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, as well. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one. No, go ahead.
So, um, Megan is here from the, uh, Employee Assistance Program, Megan Andrews. We're excited to, to announce the, the return of the Employee Assistance Program, um, in partnership with Child and Family Services of Erie County. This is a program that we had in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and it was, uh, it was a casualty of the recession era cuts.
Exactly.
Uh, back in those, those years. And, um, you know, everybody around this table is, is concerned about making Maryville a place where, you know, each employee knows and cares about them and, uh, as a whole person, and, uh, their families as well. And that's the spirit in which, you know, the board wanted to bring, uh, this program back, uh, to, to, to the district. So, um, I reached out to Megan, we talked on the phone several times. I appreciate your patience with all my questions.
Not at all.
Um, thank you for your time. And, um, it's on the agenda tonight, uh, the consulting services agreement, and, um, Megan graciously agreed you up here, here tonight and talked about the, the service for our employees. And, uh, yeah, and, and any board members who want to say anything, and I'll turn right over to you.
Well, thank you for coming in tonight. You know, this is definitely something, we always focus on kids, but I think our, our staff and teachers and even at our level is just as important to be looking at too when it comes to this, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming in today.
You know, I, I, I always say it's the, it's a responsibility when you're a leader anywhere to take care of yourself. You know, we know that it's imperative that we can maintain emotional regulation in the classroom, uh, and beyond, uh, when we're making decisions. Uh, nobody gets smarter when they feel threatened or when they feel, uh, that their, their systems are overwhelmed. So, whatever we can do to help support individuals, um, and groups within the organization, that's what we do. Just to give you a little bit, my name is Megan Andrews. I'm a clinical social worker by training and by education. Um, I've been with the program for almost ten years. Uh, in those ten years, um, we have seen quite a difference, uh, especially over the past five or six. The emphasis on health and wellness and the openness about it that we're seeing is really like striking while it's on your top, you know? Uh, we're talking about it, we're finally saying things like, people are overwhelmed. Um, how can we help them? What do we need to do? And our program really is a neutral, confidential, professional service for anyone who works for the district or lives with someone who works in the district. And we'll let everybody in the room on, on a little secret device. Uh, if someone calls and says, I work for Maryvale, that's the verification needed. Uh, we do not, we want as few barriers to people accessing our services as possible. Someone calls and says, I live with someone who works at Maryvale, we provide them service. We don't ask them for that employee's name, their number, their ID, we don't ask for anything. It's really about a partnership. It's an agreement. We're a not-for-profit employee assistance program, which is very different in this type of industry. Um, but that uniquely puts us in a position where what we can do is, um, do what is best for the person calling us. As a social worker, there's nothing better than not having to deal with insurance companies. Um, so dedicated employers like yourself, and just so, you know, you're aware, we have about a hundred and eighty organizations and over twenty-five school districts in the area, including Erie One and Erie Two Voces. Uh, so, that being said, um, your, your employees, your staff, your, uh, faculty are all going, would have the benefit of all of the services that we have here. The website I have pulled up just, uh, it's newly redesigned, uh, and it is, it, it has a wealth of resources available as well as ex- explanation of how the program can support both employees and the employer, which is you. Uh, and that means, uh, we are here for the individuals. Uh, they can call us, they can fill out a form online, um, they can send us an email, uh, any way they want to access us. We know that the phone's open, uh, it's, uh, eight-thirty, four-thirty for us to be answering, and it's got a lot of new fancy colors, because we did a lot of rebranding last year. Uh, so now we're all colorful, which is great. Uh, but we want people to know that some people are comfortable calling, some people are comfortable at filling out a form. But we also recognize that not all challenges happen or need, in need of support are between eight-thirty and four-thirty. Um, we have evening appointments available. We also have counselors available twenty-four-seven for in-the-moment support, because if someone has a challenging, uh, conversation with one of their family members, something happens, their son comes home and they just get no matter, and they want some support, because it is about how we remind ourselves that we're gonna be okay, um, that we can settle our emotions and we can find some hope and some path forward. And that's what counselors are there for, uh, for the, uh, employees. So, we have a variety of services, everything from counseling. What's on the table today is our expanded EAP program. That expanded, uh, program offers eight counseling sessions, um, per employee or per family member. Not, it's not per household, so whoever calls, that person gets eight. Um, we, we do what we can, you know, to make sure that person gets the level of care that they best need. Now, if someone calls us and they need inpatient, we're gonna help them navigate that. We're not, you know, that's, we're not gonna take you to Erie session, because then you get to the inpatient. We make sure that the person gets to the level of care that they, they need. And having those eight sessions, it really gives us the latitude to really resolve problems that can be resolved within a short period of time, um, getting ahead of any potential crisis, because that's really what we're trying to do. What we ask of you is to, uh, be our ambassadors. Uh, make sure people know that this is available, that the two most important things, to constantly tell people, it's available for you and your household numbers, it's available and it's a hundred percent confidential, meaning we are not gonna share any information with you. You can call me and say, so-and-so called, I'm not gonna tell you. Um, I'm gonna say, I can't confirm or deny anything, but I will share any general information that I can about what we traditionally do when someone calls with a particular issue. Um, we will always share data, and we make sure that the employees know that. The data is, uh, de-identified data, we will get a report every year. Um, we can run a report anytime you want, uh, to just say this number of people are calling. Um, perhaps we do an event, maybe we come to a wellness fair and we wanna see if there's a bump, um, that, we can do that at any time. But annually, that will come through. I do invite you to visit our website when you get a chance, uh, cfsbny.eap or eap.cfsbny.org. Uh, and it's also, any one of these QR codes will get you there, uh, easily and, uh, get you to the page that you're looking for. Uh, the other services I do want you to be familiar with is not only a counseling service, but we also have up to three hours annually, uh, financial coaching. We partner with, uh, Parishure Credit Counseling, used to be called, uh, Consumer Credit Counseling. It's a not-for-profit financial service. Uh, debt consolidation has become a for-profit industry, and we won't partner with anybody that would be, uh, benefiting from, uh, our partnership, uh, financially, because we want them to have the best interest of the individuals at hand. Uh, Parishure Credit Counseling is incredible. Uh, we partner with, uh, several people around, uh, elder care consultations, including Oasis, including, uh, Department of Senior Services and Alzheimer's Association, uh, because that is a, a concern, and any resources we can provide employees around that, we will. Child Care Coalition, we've worked with. Uh, what you have up there now, uh, is, Joe, is the, um, is the handbook or the catalog that has, uh, educational programming. So, as employer, uh, you can bring us in during, uh, Superintendent Day, and we will provide, we have up to four, uh, presentations, presentation credits, uh, annually. If you need more than four presentations, maybe you want the sixth one or, you know, we can always, uh, contract for additional, uh, additional credits to put towards, uh, different programming that we can bring. We have partners in the area that, uh, bring this, uh, partners, as well as internally, we provide presentations, areas with, uh, people, uh, focused on the areas of expertise that they have, uh, bringing these programs, everything from kind of lunch and learns, like healthy eating and, uh, self-care, uh, how to communicate effectively through email, um, it could be any number of issues, but it's a catalog, but you can peruse and, uh, let us know if you're interested in any of that programming. Um, in addition, directly to the employees, we provide, uh, legal information and referral services. Uh, we partner with, uh, Erie, uh, Fire Association of Erie County, uh, who are the experts in that area. Uh, we also provide, uh, for the legal consultation, we also provide, uh, consultation around mediation or what we call alternative dispute resolution services. Oftentimes, people go to court because they wanna feel heard, or they wanna feel that there's justice to be had. Oftentimes, when you walk out of court, that's not how you feel. Um, and so, alternative dispute resolutions such as conflict coaching or mediation. We have a partner program right within Child and Family called Center for Resolution and Justice, and they have a grant-funded program, so we can provide easy access to those services as well. Finally, we have nutritional counseling, we have a handful of nutritionists that work with us in the community, uh, and we refer to them. Again, all of these services are at no cost, because you, as a board and as a district, are supporting the employees through this, uh, through this partnership. Any questions? Because I could talk about this all day, but I try and give you the leaders' digest version. I was told five, ten minutes, that is not easy. Any questions?
If somebody wants to come in, do you have an office where somebody can come in and sit down and talk to somebody?
Oh, absolutely.
Or is it only phone calls?
We prefer that. So, we have, I think one of the best, uh, parts about, uh, being a local EAP, um, is that, uh, we have, so we have a different model than some of the not-for-profit or from some of the profits. The profit, for-profit nationals tend to use, uh, what they call affiliate partners. We have internal counselors. So, we have a staff of fourteen counselors. Here, we have one office at Genesee and, uh, thirty, uh, thirty-three, which is right across from the airport. It's a standalone building, uh, easy parking, easily accessible, very safe. We also have another one, uh, building, uh, office space in the Triane Building, which is right there on that picture. Uh, the Triane Building is really nice too, because it's a, come here, not, not on this building. Um, you could be going in there for lunch, you could be going in there for the gym that's upstairs or the art studio, and people come in there and they really are comfortable with that space also. Uh, and again, easy access parking and, you know, right there. And, um, so we have counselors split up between both offices, they kind of swap and we kind of move around a lot, um, but we try to dedicate, uh, days and evenings, so Monday evenings, Wednesday evenings, and Thursday evenings are dedicated evenings. Um, and, uh, we really, uh, I ca- I can assure you that more than a few times a week, we can get same-day appointments. Um, usually people are, when we say, oh, you could come in tomorrow, they're like, oh, I was thinking next week, you know? Um, sometimes people are telling us, that's too fast. Um, but we really do, uh, wanna make it as easy as possible, but we also know that people need to get easy access. But in-person, virtual, either one works. Um, we didn't do one virtual appointment before March thirteenth, nineteen twenty, or twenty-twenty, um, but we have become expert six, uh, including, uh, additionally, in the , uh, events page, I do wanna bring that to your attention or on the right-hand side. Um, every month, the other thing we do is we try to, uh, uh, we ask you to be our ambassadors and our promoters, and I have, Joe, I have a whole packet of pens and flyers and, uh, posters and all kinds of stuff. Um, and I ask you to kind of distribute it to the different buildings and pick out some point people that can really get this word out. Uh, people need to hear it's confidential, and people need to hear, um, that it's free to them, um, and it's a professional service. But we also need to get in front of your employees. We need to get in front of them, so they, it's about developing a relationship, okay? Not only with administration and with, uh, leaders, but we also need to develop a relationship with your employees. And part of doing that is bringing up our Quick Start Guide, uh, making sure that people have orientations at the ready. Some people like to watch a three-minute video, some people like to look at a flyer, some people like to look at the website at their own leisure. Um, we just kind of have to give it to them all the time. So, uh, every month, we also do different programming, uh, to give people an opportunity to kind of test it out and get to know us a little bit. Um, this month, we did what we call a stress screening event, uh, where we sent out a link and people could just get a little quick and easy appointment, where we went through a stress, uh, inventory and had a conversation. I will tell you, when we do stress screening events, and we do them quarterly, uh, we get about fifty percent of the people that do a stress screening convert to a counseling, uh, session, which is exactly what we're looking for. Some people just need, I just wanted to know what my stress was, and I just wanted to talk about it today. And that's great, but maybe they might call us in a month or two if something does happen. Uh, the reality is, we just need to get as much face time as we can. Um, again, superintendent days, any days where you have, um, get us in there, have us do a lunch and learn, um, invite us in, make sure, because every month, you'll get an email, uh, that indicates what we're doing that month. Next month, we're gonna be doing, uh, self-care preservation in honor of Black History Month, kind of multicultural, and what's the, uh, differences around self-care, uh, in, uh, different cultures, um, and especially in the black community. Uh, and we have that program coming up next month, it's on the twenty-second, but in the email, it has a link, you can register, and they're always recorded. We know the teachers often can't just step away, they do a webinar at noon, um, but we also know that we wanna make sure they have that information. On our website, and all of these recorded webinars are also available, so the past, uh, four years of our events are all available, if you wanna ever take a look. Um, it's on the employee page, um, but it's down there too, yeah, in case you missed it, stuff is down there. Um, so we do try to, we recognize that not everybody wants to watch a webinar, but, and not everybody wants to do a stress screen, but we try to give as many options as possible to give people, uh, the best opportunity, um, to get the help that they need when they need it. There you go. Hey, you already learned the website. I'm gonna drop this with you, Joe. But I'll take any questions.
I was gonna say, I know it's not traditional, but we have all four of our building leaders here. Do you guys have any questions?
You know, I'm familiar with the AP for my previous district. It's been, it was, it's been very good.
In what district were you?
Uh, Williamsville and Cleve Hill.
Okay. All right, Cleve Hill, and we are friendly and actually, uh, last year, we started with Williamsville.
Yep.
Yep.
Did you come to a faculty meeting?
Yes.
To discuss this thing?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Any opportunities, anytime you have people together, a group of people, even if it's one building, um, invite us. If it's virtual, we'll pop on, if it's in-person, we'll scoot over. Uh, we do have, uh, we, we have, any one of our staff can come out and talk about the services.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Julio? Thank you very much.
Nice, thank you guys. Appreciate it. If you guys need anything, give a call, and we'll be in touch.
All right.
I think we're starting tomorrow.
Yeah?
Uh, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna send out a reservation to our employees tomorrow.
That'd be awesome. That's awesome. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, we booked up our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and, um, I sent out a survey to our employees about, you know, uh, well, teaching and administrative staff, because that's mainly who, uh, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction works with, on what they're looking for in the next Assistant Superintendent, what the areas of focus should be for that person, what needs exist, and the desired traits the next person should possess. And I, I wanna kind of show the results tonight, um, and talk about the, the next steps in the process. So, we had about seventy-eight responses, mostly elementary teachers, secondary teachers and some administrators. Uh, it's about half of our, almost half of our teaching staff, which is a decent representation, not, um, not all of them, but it's a good representation of, of what folks are looking for. And these are the traits. And the question was, how important is each of the following areas of responsibility for the, the new Assistant Superintendent? And you could see that the purple are the things that our folks say are critically important. And you can see what, what pops up. Communication with, uh, teachers and, and building administrators, building positive relationships with all stakeholders, and empowerment, empowering teachers and administrators to lead. These, those are the three main traits that, um, our folks say are critically important. There was so, so much information, a lot of, a lot of these questions, uh, so I decided to display them as like a word cloud. Easiest, easiest way of adding to somebody, I think, in this format, and, you know, what areas of question, what areas of focus do you think are necessary for the curriculum office? And you, and you see, kind of the same themes emerge, you know, communications down here big, teachers, programs, um, curriculum, but, you know, what pops out at me are, you know, communication and programs, uh, are the biggest things. What are the most important issues the new Assistant Superintendent should focus on when she or he assumes the position? What are the priorities? And, you know, same thing, curriculum, relationships is big in here, building relationships, um, support is something that pops up, instruction, students and teachers are important items on here. What professional development needs exist? Big thing is, is teachers, you know, focus on teachers. Curriculum and programs, I think, are always gonna be, be there, but, um, I think teachers are, are, are saying they need support in professional development. What curriculum and assessment needs exist? You know, there's reading, the science of reading is, is coming up, is a big, uh, push in the district. Kristen and, and Eileen are doing a fantastic job with their staff, leading, leading this change, are already doing some, some good things in preparation for, uh, for it, but you see it pops out here, science of reading, um, you know, writing and math, all the, all the, all the, uh, poor things are here. Other than, you know, I, I just teach social studies, I don't see social studies here. How much, hey, what do you think?
I'm a little tired. I'm a little tired.
Lucy's a lot down here.
Yeah. Joe, it's automatic, that's why.
Yeah.
It's a part of the fabric of all education.
Yeah, it's what you're saying, yeah.
It's like osmosis, you can't breathe. It's like breathing.
Lucy, I don't think that's therapy, Doc, I think that's Lucy Cockens.
Oh.
You know, um, there, there was some divergence here, that there's a, there's a, a large contingent that support Lucy and a large contingent that don't support Lucy. So, this is, uh, something that our ELA committee's gonna have to work through, and we talked about this with the, with our coaches and our professors. In your own words, describe the type of administrator you, you believe would be the best fit for Maryvale. You know, um, a person that supports students, teachers, uh, has, has experience, is, is supportive, is honest, is trustworthy, is approachable, those are knowledgeable, big words that, that pop up here. And I want our stakeholders to know that, you know, we're taking this into account when we look for the next candidate for this position. These are the things that, that, that we're looking for as we interview. And, um, I also included a couple, um, spots for folks to write questions, what questions we do like us to ask the, the next person. And we use that, all the questions in the interview packets for this person. So, our stakeholders are gonna have a voice in, in ultimately how, uh, we proceed with the position. And we're interviewing tomorrow, we have committee interviews tomorrow, they have good representation of teachers, uh, we have parent representatives, we have administrators, and, uh, you know, we're gonna be looking for a person that hopefully fits these, uh, these traits. So, um, I wanted to kind of bring this up in a board meeting to just let folks know that, you know, you didn't take the survey in vain, we're really, we're really looking for these things, and, um, your voice is, uh, is important to us. Any questions from, from the board?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Lynn?
All right, I would recommend that the board approve the financial non-personnel consent agenda items one through four, noting that, um, board package that included the treasures report, uh, what that weren't completed today, we'll do those in February, um, so they're not on the agenda when they work hard on it.
Scheduled investments too, correct?
And the investments, correct, yep.
Do we have a motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Uh, the second recommendation will be for the personnel consent agenda items. Two things to note, uh, we received today a retirement resignation from our longtime maintenance mechanic, Dave Allen. Um, so we've included that on the agenda effective April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. And the third one, um, for Stephanie D'Amico's resignation from her clerical position, uh, that should actually be effective today, because we're appointing her as a teacher assistant starting tomorrow. So, that date should be one twenty-two, twenty-four, um, as a correction there. With those comments, I would recommend the board approve the personnel consent agenda items one through eight as submitted.
Do we have a motion? A motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Stephanie is here today, congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a motion, uh, for the board to authorize me to approve signing the contract with the, uh, family, Child and Family Services of Buffalo for the Employee Assistance Program?
Do we have a motion to approve the contract for the EAP program?
Second.
All in favor?
I'd like to ask the board to approve the certification of lead evaluators as presented.
Motion?
A motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd ask the board to approve the donations as presented.
Do they have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd ask the board to approve the disposition of surplus equipment as presented.
Do we have a motion?
A motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Lynn, a couple of hundred-dollar. Yes, our capital outlay project, um, there was a question in regards to the amount. Um, this has been a hundred-thousand-dollar project included in our budget for years. We might be on number twelve. Um, it's been going on a while, uh, and there was talk this past year of increasing that to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, because it's very hard to find a project of value to get done at a hundred-thousand dollars. A lot of these things with architect fees and drawings and what's required, um, become expensive. It was ultimately not approved by the state for the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar level, uh, but we'll see how that progresses moving forward. Um, we have a contract here today with the architect, uh, we look to get back to the primary school and address more of the sinks, cabinetry, woodwork in those elementary schools that need replacing. We had done some in twenty-two, twenty-three. The current year, we moved upstairs to do some work in our intermediate school office, but starting next year, this work would, would be done, starting in July, and be done over the course of next school year. We're looking to approve a contract with Young and Wright to help get that ready, um, so that we can go back and do more of that millwork, uh, cabinetry, sinks and things so that we can go back and do more of that millwork, cabinetry, sinks and things down at the primary school. If there aren't questions, or if there are, that's fine, but I would recommend that the board approve this contract with Young &amp; Wright as presented.
Motion, do we have?
Sorry, a motion.
All in favor?
All in.
Eileen, we're going to put pinstripes in there.
Pinstripes?
Yeah. That's on the contract page for.
A lot of socks. Choose a socks.
If we can just go back to number two real quick under donations that we did accept. I just want to point out that one of those donations was an additional hundred thousand in bullet aid that Assemblywoman Monica Wallace was able to get for us, which was one of the key factors in us being able to do the family resource center. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Thank you. The next two items, I'm going to talk about them combined, and I don't think there's separate action for the board to take in this situation regarding our transportation contract. Very brief history is that we bid transportation services in the spring of twenty fifteen. It was a five-year contract, and ultimately, the incumbent, First Student, was awarded the bid. It was a substantial increase. It was twenty-five, thirty percent, and there's different categories. And they maintained the contract, but the competitor, it was pretty close. So I kind of felt, even though it was a spike, you know, an increase in the cost, I felt it seemed to be representative. It's, I thought ultimately, we're getting what the value legitimately was in the marketplace for that. At the end of that five years, we've agreed to extend the contract two years. Contract extension means that both parties agree to maintain the bid specs as is. And the only thing that changes is ultimately costs, which are increased by an established consumer price index, an inflationary factor that comes out every May, and we'd agreed, yes, we'll do it for two years based on the CPI, change only. At the end of that first two-year extension, we were able to agree on it, second two-year extension, which now expires this coming June thirtieth. So we are at a point where we need to either extend it again for whatever term we want, you know, up to five years. It could be a one-year, two-year, three-year, or five years, or we go to bid. And we're at that point where we have to really decide one way or the other. I've been working with my contact at First Student, who had a proposal, which was included in the board packet, saying we'd like to extend, but we cannot extend at CPI increases only. We need the district to agree to some modifications in the bid specs, which included relaxing the turnover of buses. We want to make sure that the average life or the years, the age of our fleet doesn't get so old that they're constantly running down and breaking down. He was hoping that we could relax that a little bit so they don't have to replace buses as quick as they currently have to. They wanted to pass on some costs associated with driver regulations. They have to do physicals, they have to have other requirements for their CBL, and there's costs associated. Currently, they bear the cost of those, they wanted us to, or they want us to. Drivers are required to do dry runs before school starts in September. Get on the bus, drive your route with no kids on there just to see, get familiar with it, kind of know timing, figure those things out. They do that at their cost. He wants us, in this proposal, to extend, to pay for that time that drivers are on the road doing dry runs. I believe, lastly, the fourth thing that he wants to do is to move a three-hour bus route minimum to a four-hour bus route minimum. Their contract with their bargaining unit, their, their union, their drivers, requires First Student to pay them four-hour minimums. Our contract with First Student says, we will pay you up to three-hour minimums. So there are a handful, say five, six routes, he said somewhere in an email, there's a few routes that are short of four hours. He's on the hook, pay him four hours, but we don't pay him the full four hours. He wants us to move that. And then he'd move forward with this three-year contract extension. He projects the annual cost of these four items to be about sixty thousand dollars, is really what he's asking for, sixty thousand dollars more a year plus the CPI. Honestly, I'm sitting here today telling you that doesn't seem unreasonable to me. It's, you get transportation aid, you know, so even if that's at sixty percent, that's significant. So, but it lags a year, which is an issue here for us. The problem is, SCD, I don't think they're ultimately going to. They've turned over staff, the guy who's been there for years retired, and so the new person's catching up, and he hasn't gotten back to us. But SCD does not like schools to change the bid specs in extensions without rebidding, because it's not fair to then the competitor, who in this case was STA, Student Transportation of America, nine, ten years ago at this point, for them to not be a part of this when you're changing the bid specs after they submitted bid. So I don't think ultimately SCD is going to approve this contract extension. I don't have it in writing from them right here tonight, like I wanted to have. I checked emails, just five fifty tonight. I don't think they will ultimately approve that. If they do, I would love to recommend that the board grant permission to move forward with this proposal, even at that sixty thousand dollar higher cost, because I think that's reasonable. But First Student has also indicated that if we don't approve this three-year extension, they won't consider anything else, and we have to go to bid. They know we're trying to get a response from SCD in regards to if this is acceptable. But I know from past experience and conversations with SCD regarding food service contracts, which work this exact same way, it's just a different department, they won't let you make changes to the bid specs without reopening the bid. And I was telling Mr. D'Angelo, in fact, several years ago, we did a bid one year over the summer. The state changed the nutritional guidelines that were required, or the federal government did. They forced us to rebid a five-year contract the very next year, because they changed the bid specs. The districts weren't even trying to do the bid specs. So we bid food service two years in a row, even though we'd bid it once for a five-year contract. So I don't expect they'll approve this. With transportation being a five million dollar, give or take, expense, I don't want to move forward with something that the state say, wait, what are you doing? We're not going to give you any transportation aid on any of that for next year, because you didn't bid it. So I definitely want an answer from SCD before I move forward. I also don't want to wait too long for that answer if they're slow at getting that response to me, simply because the longer we wait and conduct bids later in the spring, the higher the prices will go typically. We may not get competition, because people who aren't already providing those buses may have a challenge getting things established up and running, hiring the staff, getting the facilities, making the conversions to take over our operation, starting July for summer runs, and then September, obviously, for everything else. So we're kind of in this limbo stage. So at our last meeting, I think there was a conversation about this. Mr. McDermott, I think you had asked, would they agree to an extension that's just CPI? And I said, I don't think so. That's true, they won't. He says other districts have done this, but in trying to get information, oh, who were they? Let me talk, let me talk to them, how did they do it? I would love to do this and get it through. If I could talk to them, then I'll know, hey, make sure you've done these steps to make that happen. And he won't connect me with those people, he won't tell me who those districts are. So just that reaction kind of makes me a little uncomfortable. Could you reach out to those prior schools and say, hey, would you on your own be willing for me to either pass your name on to Maryvale or reach out to them directly? That wasn't done, I was just told, no, out of respect to those other clients, I don't want to share that information. Again, making me think it's kind of a questionable workaround, the bidding requirement by SCD. So all of that, let me just set that aside for a minute and go to the next item. The next item is in regards to bidding specifically. And when we bid in twenty fifteen, there is an organization, Transportation Advisory Services, TAS, that worked with us extensively in conducting our bid. We had actually bid cooperatively, where we conducted our bid at the exact same time, same dates, same locations with Chicoaga Central and Cleveland Hill, or Amherst. Amherst was in that as well. Maybe Central wasn't, it was Amherst and Leaf Hill, I believe. We couldn't join, it wasn't one or all, we were all individual contracts, the way it was set up. But I've reached out to TAS, and they've made a proposal to help us manage our bid, if that's the direction we go. They'll help pull things together, they'll look at common practices across the industry and the state. What are the right and best specs to put into your new contracts? What are other districts doing that makes sense for Maryvale? They'll sit at the table, they'll help dialogue with the bidders, and they'll help analyze those bid calls. So I don't want to give up on the extension. I don't think First Student, in reality, really wants to give up the contract or risk losing it for, if their math is right, it's a sixty thousand dollar item. That's a big number, but on a five million dollar budget contract, it really isn't a big number. But he's saying it's this extension with these bids, or we go to bid. So what I'm asking for your permission with tonight is ultimately to approve us to move forward with this contract with TAS between now and the next meeting, so that I can sign it as I need to. But I'm hoping within the next day or two, maybe even the end of the week, if I can get confirmation from SCD one way or the other. I don't want to abandon the extension, and we move forward with the bid tonight, but tomorrow morning, they email me, yeah, that's fine. I would prefer the extension approach. And if SCD says no to this three-year extension, I could still go back to First Student and say, okay, we definitely can't do this. Are you sure you won't entertain even a one-year extension at CPI, kick the can down the road for a year and see what happens? Or are you in fact truly wanting to go to bid? My guess is, well, I can't, honestly, I don't know what my guess is. I wouldn't want to give up a five million dollar contract potentially over the possibility of picking sixty thousand dollars up. But they're dealing with driver shortages and increased costs and bonuses and things they've had to try to get to attract drivers. Electric school buses, we talked about that. That's in the near future, that's going to impact them financially down the road. So I'm not sure where that will go ultimately, or what they would want. But if I could have your permission to move forward with TAS, if SCD says no to this arrangement, and then ultimately, if First Student says, okay, we can't go with this, we are not going to pursue a one-year extension, then we can go to bid. So if you follow what I'm asking, it's very weird, I know it seems a little bit unusual, it's not definitive, we're going this direction. But I think it's the right approach to continue to try to get an extension. This was just received, you know, last week, although we had talked about some of the details over the last month and a half. But then trying to get a response from SCD has been, they're busy. And it's new staff, and they're trying to get answers. So would you guys be agreeable to still pursuing this three-year agreement with First Student if SCD says yes? If they don't, I'm just going to go to First Student and say, are you sure you won't even do a one-year extension at CPI only? If he says no, like he has already, then we'll be bidding. And we'll be bidding like February, you know, early March is kind of the timeframe we're targeting. Because it could be, if we go to bid, I mean, I don't know what the competition will be. He says sixty thousand dollars covers it. I don't know if we go to bid, if he's only going to bid sixty thousand dollars higher. You know, in reality, maybe it's a higher number. But I don't know what to expect there. But that could be a budget item where we're looking at, again, spiking our transportation cost, waiting for the state aid to come the following year. In this case, that additional increase of transportation cost wouldn't generate aid until twenty-five, twenty-six, when you start seeing that flow back into the district a year later. Talked a lot, there's a lot here, so what questions do you have?
So I have a couple of questions. Number two, so the average fleet thing, the school bus age thing. I believe last meeting, we just signed a contract to give our NYSERTA grant to them.
To work, to work with them through NYSERTA.
Yeah, to get any extra grant money available there.
Yep.
If and when we do change over to these electric buses, or they change over to the electric buses, are they going to last twelve years max and eight on average? Versus, you know, a diesel-powered bus that is getting replaced every six and a half years now? I can't believe they would last longer.
Yeah, and I don't know who knows that answer, because I don't know that there's an electric bus out there that's twelve years old. You know, even the ones that have been on the road the longest, I'm sure it's not been twelve years that they've been running or would be running capacity. We would expect them to be doing. And the reality is with that coming, the electric school bus requirement, even if we go to bid, there is a legit reality that in five years, they don't agree to simply extend, that they're going to have better information on cost, life of buses, that would require them to say, you know, we probably ought to bump our price up. They're telling me, from what I'm hearing, meaning my counterparts, other people that I'm talking with, these electric school buses are like four hundred thousand dollars a piece. Yes, or a hundred thousand dollars per bus. And that's crazy.
So if, sort of kind of tie onto that, so if this doesn't happen, and we don't, you don't, we don't get approval from SCD, do we negate that contract that we just signed with them if they, if we have to go to bid?
Yeah, I still want to pursue NYSERTA. And in fact, since, I'm glad you mentioned it, because since the last meeting, I've confirmed that Erie One Boses is organizing an electric school bus NYSERTA study group kind of a thing through a service with Wendell. Like, they're asking Wendell to come in and work with schools who are interested in this. And in fact, from their notes, which I've already signed on to them, saying we're doing this. So we're not just pursuing it with First Student's assistance, we're actually pursuing it probably more intently with this Boses group to come in and do a study and see what some of these details are. And the reality is, that is probably going to have some impact. And as we go through that, we will document and adjust as needed.
Okay. And then item number three, so the dry run thing. And I, understanding that everything you're talking about here outside of CPI is sixty thousand, if it's going to cost sixty-five thousand for them to do like two or three days worth of a dry run, I feel like they're doing dry runs picking up our students for the first month and a half, and then their union contracts change and get all rebid again in October. So then the bus, the bus routes are all messed up again, so. And I know we're not going to be able to get their union contract to change, but.
We dry run for two months.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a dry run for two months, so I struggle with that one, just because. I struggle with that one, just because of the issues we have.
Correct. And that was, I mean, those were two things that I talked to him about. That didn't get documented. In this, he included the four things that they would like us to consider. He said, we'll approach our union again in regards to their contractual ability or requirement for drivers to wait until November. But I think they look at runs in October and they submit bids based on what's happening. Oh, that's happening. I want to go on that run. And then drivers get shuffled at the end of October. So that November 1st, they're learning all new routes again because they've switched people around. It's a pain in the neck and we end up with a whole, September again, happens again in November. And it's been a challenge for us. And they know it. It comes up, you know, 17 years, so I've probably talked to them about this 200 times. At least 17. But. It is in their contract. So he goes, I'll talk to the union and see, but we haven't had luck getting them to switch it. I don't, I don't know the right answer, other than get them posted in August. And then when they sign up for the runs in September, don't they match what they should.
Against that virus.
On a new contract.
Right. And, and that is one thing with TAS, I want to have that conversation to know, what if we put that in there? How would that impact? Because could they not bid if they can't honor that? Or would they bid and say, we're giving you this price, but we can't meet that requirement? Accept our bid knowing we're gonna do business as usual?
I don't want to find out.
And the other thing is their routing program. There's a bunch of variety, there's a bunch of them out there. There's one that we have worked with more when we did more of the routing ourselves internally, that we liked, is easier to deal with. Been wanting them to switch to that one. But they continue to use another one that does the trick. It's just a bit more complicated. And every year, you gotta note little hiccups. Oh, don't forget, this program doesn't allow you to keep changes you put in place last year. So every summer, you're going back and creating all those changes again. So there is conversation to be had. And with our bid specs, if we go that way, we'll look to line those up appropriately.
I just have a question, Steve. How many bus companies are there?
There haven't been too many. When we did our bids before, First Student was the incumbent and bid, obviously. Student Transportation of America was the other one that bid. And around that time, Student Transportation of America was in the process of or buying out what was known as Ridge Road Express, which is up in Niagara County. And so I was thinking maybe we'd get three. But it turned out they became the same company. So we ended up with two bidders. Western New York Bus Company is another smaller company that's out there, who, for lack of maybe a better phrase, cherry picked during our bid. And they chose Cleveland Hill. And I don't know if they even picked all of Cleveland Hill or just their special ed runs or just their home-to-school. But Cleveland Hill got three people, three companies to bid on their package. They ended up being the low bidder and they've switched all those years ago to Western New York Bus. They have a lot of the same issues that we deal with. So it's not like, hey, yeah, life is great over here. It's perfect, flawless. It's wonderful. They deal with some of the same issues we do. So it's not necessarily the company per se. It is part of that industry. But you also have to continue to have those conversations and make sure things that are obvious aren't done again in error. Like how many times do we have to say not to do this, but it keeps happening? So just keeping it fresh. But yeah, there may be three. I don't, there used to be a place called Fisher Bus Company and I'm not sure if they're around anymore. But that's what TAS will also know, because they're more broader across the state that I hope that they can help encourage more competition if we in fact do go to bid. This contract would generate transportation aid too. It's part of our transportation expense. So I know it's a pretty good number, 10 grand, 15 grand, I think. That will generate transportation aid for what that's worth. But I think that's well worth doing.
There's actually my last question. Is that 15, well, it's 15, five, a couple thousand dollar travel days or?
Sure.
Is that 17,000 worth it for us? Like is that?
Yes.
Are we on the hook to pay that if we in fact are approved by SED to just do the extension?
No, and what I'm thinking is if, if you give permission, you know, to say yes. What, what I like is the direction from the board to say, pursue the three-year extension. If SED says yes, we're doing it. And we'll go through and sign the paperwork. If they say no, I'll ask First Student one last time. Hey, we're going to bid unless you'll do a one-year extension? Will that help just kind of kick that can down the road? And if they say no, then we go to bid. So I, if you give permission for this process, I wouldn't finalize the bid or the TAS contract until someday. I'm not gonna wait long. It'll be this week. But hopefully get that response from SED first. And if I don't get it, or I don't need to bid, we won't do that. Sorry, there's a lot there. If you have questions, you can email me tomorrow, this week, let me know.
So does anyone have any other questions either on the First Student or the TAS? Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve First Student contract extension as written.
It will.
Or potentially with a one-year versus a three-year.
Yeah, authorize the, the district pursuing an extension with SED's approval. And if not, ultimately approving, moving forward with it. Approving that process. And we can talk more, like really, you, you get the gist of what we're trying to do here.
Yes. So we need a motion for that.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Play that back.
Now we need a motion to, in some fashion, potentially, if we need to sign the contract for TAS.
To me, that was, to me, that was in that.
What, I think it's got two separate, I think. Two separate.
Two separate motions, because they're two separate contracts.
Yeah, what he said.
Okay, so it, it will be permission to pursue the bid management proposal with TAS pending, based on the outcome of the state's approval on the extensions.
All in favor?
All right, the workplace violence prevention policy. Just recently, the New York State Department of Labor announced the expansion of the Workplace Violence Prevention Law to public education facilities. So we have to complete a workplace violence policy statement, workplace risks, risk evaluation, and a workplace violence prevention program by May 3rd, 2024. So they, within 30 days of the law going into effect, we have to have a policy statement in place. That 30 days is the end of next week. We're prepared to go in that direction because we've engaged our stakeholders in the district. We've met with the MTA, the CFCA, the CMAA as a group to talk about this policy and how we're gonna implement it. We're prepared to do it. But we just need to have the board approve the policy. And because of the tight timeline initiated by the legislation, I'd like to ask the board to approve the policy and waive the subsequent readings tonight. Any questions?
That's what we saw before, right?
No, this is Dixon.
That's Dixon?
You're talking about the restraint policy, we're still working on that.
Okay.
So do we have a motion to approve the policy as written and waive the second meeting? Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student liaison.
Hello.
Hi.
Who was this? Hi. So on the side of the primary, and we're still, where we're still focusing on the policy assemblies and the monthly character traits, where we, every, on Thursdays, we have our dreams of experience for these assemblies. And when each of these character traits are shown at the, introduced at these assemblies, the teachers and staff will put on a skit to really help the students really like understand like what these character traits mean and what it means to really embody them and why they're important, that they're really like taking these to heart and use and using them. We're also still prioritizing bus safety at the primary. And they now have, where the students can get tickets at the, on their bus for good behavior. And they'll put their names and they'll go in a drawing. So a couple of students from each grade levels will be able to get, be able to be a, a bus fighter of the month, which is really cool. So I think I would appreciate that. Some better bus behavior on my buses. And then the Golden Spectral Award is making a comeback for all the classes that are responsible and respectful and safe in the cafeteria. And all of the classes that win, they'll be able to have a VIP lunch with Ms. Hada on the stage and get a very sparkly and glittery spatula to go on their classroom doors. I'll do that and take more glitter.
I know, so Lisa likes glitter too.
And the PTO is having their book, the book can go this Thursday. And then moving on to the intermediate school. In December, they had their kindness tree, where for every five acts of kindness that each student did, they were able to get mitten with their name on it and put it on the tree. And the tree was covered in kindness, which is really nice. And it was just in the main lobby, so everyone could see it, really displayed like something to be prideful about. And the fourth grade student leadership council was put, was able to put together and deliver birthday boxes to the high school to help out with the food pantry at the high school. And the, the third grade student leadership council was also able to help with the food pantry by collecting reusable bags for the food pantry as well. And lastly, the winter fest that was canceled last week for, for the intermediate school is getting rescheduled for the first week of February. That's all for the primary and then gate school. Moving on to the middle school, they had the winter concerts for both band and chorus. Then they had the Chicoa Police Department. The Blue Bridges came in and played Grinch Ball with students and staff. It's part of an incentive for students who meet and exceed our behavior expectations. They had the school dance, but it was canceled due to the weather, so now it's rescheduled for the ninth. They also have upcoming spin night. This is a free event for students and parents and for guardians. If any activities, NHS advisors and members will also be there to help. They have separate activities for parents and students. Food and childcare will be provided by the NHS people. Moving on to the high school, we had the musical trip that went to Ohio and Pittsburgh. Then we are doing a sports gear fundraiser through NHS, but it's being spread schoolwide. So you can bring in any used sports gear that you have, just kind of laying around. Bring it down to pretty much any advisor that you have for NHS. And then we all are collecting it and then removing it and separating it and then donating it all. Then lastly, we have the upcoming snowball dance, which is on the 10th. Tickets are one for 10 or two for 15. And that's going on.
When's the musical? Because that's coming up shortly.
Musical's in March, the first is the opening night. And then the second is the matinee and the night show. Yes, you can't play that. Yes. Come on, watch. We're super excited about the show this year, so. Yeah, that's a good thing.
Nice job.
Thank you. Excuse me. ECASB, I believe you're going to the, are you still, are you going to the AI thing on Saturday?
AI thing, yeah. Artificial intelligence on Saturday, so I'll bring information back. You know, hopefully some type of guidelines that you can look at and see what other schools are doing and other, you know, entities.
Cool, cool, cool.
And also, if anybody wants to recommend a board member for.
Oh, the training, the.
For the, yeah, just for doing, you know, outstanding work.
All the awards.
Yes, the awards. So that is part of the information that Dave sends to us. Hopefully you'll get it, click it on and, you know, there's lots of great stuff on there.
Yeah, there's a handful, five or six different awards you can be nominated for.
Right, right.
So. The legislative, there was a legislative thing Thursday night that I know got canceled because of the weather.
That's right.
Because I was actually gonna go to that one too.
Yeah, I was going.
Conveniently, I was gonna go.
I think Galvin did have his.
Yeah, they met with Galvin Kennedy, I think ended up canceling last night. Wallace ended up canceling. She had conflict with. So we're, I know Jane Sullivan's trying to get those both rescheduled again. New York State, I don't have any updates, although the AI thing on Saturday is in conjunction with them, so. And I think that's it under miscellaneous. So at this point, any resident input?
Of course there is.
First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Hada. In December, we had kindergarten kids do carrots for, Christmas carrots for seniors. For, and we had representatives from the senior center come over, pick up the carrots. And they would distribute it to them. And I think for Wheels on Meals, Meals on Wheels, I think they got something up too. January, this past January, the fourth, we had, we had special speaker at DUCA. We had Paul Pacer from Pacer Peter Hall discussing out of life things, which still be wants to talk about, but it was very, very important, very informative. DUCA is gonna have, on February 1st, we're having our new chief of police. He's gonna be speaking. Chief Coons will be speaking at DUCA. And that'll be on February 1st. I also want to thank Mrs. Hada for the, the fish tank. We gotta get some fish. Hey Doc, can you give us some money for some fish? They're dying over there.
I can give you a fishing pole.
Oh, they're, they're little ones. We need, we need, you know,
Some fish.
Maybe a couple of angelfish or some gouramis or something like that. They last a little longer.
Yes, Swedish, Swedish.
I, I think it'd be nice if the board just shipped us a couple bucks, you know what I mean? Especially our board members.
Okay, resident input's over with.
And I don't like glitter. No, but seriously, are they going well there? We got more and more seniors talking about coming in, but it's hard to get people to actually do it. They're scared. They've never been with the kids before. They don't know what it's all about. But I tell them, you're gonna work with us. You're not just going to a classroom. You'll work with us till we feel, you're comfortable, we're comfortable with you, and they're comfortable with you, then you get in class. But until that time, no, you stay with us. So I also like to start inviting some of our state representatives. They have office people coming to see what we're doing here. You know, they sit in their little ivory tower. Come on out to where we're, we're the, look at these kids in the face. Take a look at what we're, what we're working with here. And thank God for our little ones. I want them to see. So, and I don't know if she's here, whoever's the lady from the bee. Caitlin, I guess her name is. She has another person coming in for this. But she's been very, very well. She came and took pictures and everything else. So we got some good, good, good photo ops for what we do here. To the, so the residents know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take a collection at the end for some fish.
Trying to think. I wanted to say something, but I can't remember what it was before we go into executive session. A motion to go into executive session to talk about the employment of a particular person?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?